I'm holding firm for about three months now.
This is the second public hearing on a quarter percent sales tax by the Lorraine County Commissioners. And we start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
Today is the second public hearing for the purpose of providing and supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a continuing period in increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to a higher revised code 5739.021 by the rate of one quarter, one percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to revised code 5739.026 by the rate of one quarter, one percent for Lorraine County Sheriff's Office operations. And I believe everybody did sign in. If you didn't, I have them.
Yes. You don't have to speak to sign in, but if you are in attendance, you need to sign in. Thank you. Sheriff, would you like to make your presentation?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me back. I'm going to pick up kind of where we left off on Tuesday, it was. And I'd like to go a little bit more in-depth into the budget line items and how this, the sales tax affects us as a county. So you can see by the slide that I just put up, these are the tax rates for the entire state of Ohio. And when you look at Lorraine, you can see us in dark blue up there. And as you can see on the bottom of it, that is one of the four counties with 6.5% or below. I missed a slide, so I'm going to go backwards. The current state tax rate is 5.75%. So of the 6.5% we currently have, 5.75% goes to the state already. Just making certain that we clarify that because as a resident or citizen who might be purchasing things in our county, they need to know that all of that sales tax does not go to the county. I think that's an important thing to note for us. As I said on Tuesday, our overall budget for this year is $31,232,398. And next year, it's estimated to be $35,500,000. I wanted to make certain I went into some detail. These are the jail expenses, and you can see the history of those jail expenses and each expenditure line item. The top section is personnel. For this year, this is the largest increase you'll see with overall budget, and that is because of the transport team that will save us overall in the long run. We're paying for them for three quarters of a million for standard housing, almost up to a million, for us to house prisoners that come to our jail from other counties or places within the state that are needed for court and on orders, and then trying to get them back. We do not have the personnel for transport. We would also be then putting in armed corrections officers instead of deputies for these transports and not having them sit on these prisoners at the hospital or any prisoner at the hospital. That corrections team would do that, which would then free up deputies to be on the road. Right now, we take from the road as is necessary for any prisoner that is at the hospital that is in our care. We're required to get them care if the, our medical team deems it necessary to have them go to a hospital, and that then ties up deputies that should be on the road serving the public. You can see the line items underneath, the supplies, all the way down through advertising and printing. I can answer any questions that you'd like about those individual line items when I'm done, so that you have a better feel of what is involved in each of these line items. But remember, I'm making an estimate based on only six months in this position and trying to make certain that I can forecast as well as I possibly can, knowing what the expenses have been. I want you to know that I have signed off on every single requisition and checked every single vendor to make certain that these vendors are the ones that we should be using, that we're getting the best prices, et cetera. This is the general fund budget. Again, the top section, you'll see the expenditure changes for personnel. A big chunk of that obviously is pension, healthcare, et cetera. Those costs of personnel really drive that number up from what you would believe, and I realize that that is a good part of our budget. Then the bottom section is all of our expenditures. And again, this year, I mentioned it on Tuesday, but the equipment leases is a big portion of the budget parts of the line items. And that, that is because we didn't account for that this year. It was never included in a line item. That was $255,000 for this year. That was not in there, but I did maneuver some things around to make certain that it is covered. So I covered it for 25 by cutting some places that I said, well, we can, we can rob from Peter to pay Paul, basically, one line item to the another. But then next year, we will have to make certain it's covered. So you'll see there's a large increase in that, and that is why. And once we hit the four-year rotation, almost five-year rotation of all vehicles, that number will stay steady. So we're looking at another increase, but every year, those numbers go down as how many vehicles we need. And you'll see that happens. And then following year, we just stay steady at whatever that number is. And I anticipate it being just under $1 million for vehicles per year. If we had to purchase them, obviously, they'd be far more expensive. The other item that we spend a lot in is supplies and materials. And I would think that that, when you look at that, that is a, and gas, gasoline, and that's obvious, is almost everything you can imagine when you hire someone new besides the supplies that it takes to run the entire agency. Again, looking at the budget between last year and this year, the increase is mostly personnel, and that is for the transport team. And I am going to let the sheriff speak on that when I'm finished, just so that you have that as a, as a reference as to why that would need to be increased and why we're doing that. But as you can see, there are very few things that are going up in costs other than equipment lease. And when you say other expenses, that's pretty much all of the other things that you see within the line items that are listed, the comparison between the two budgets. So what, again, what will it cost the end user? So as a citizen, what am I going to be paying for this quarter percent tax increase? On $100, it is a quarter. It's a quarter that means a lot to us. On $10,000, it's $25. And what can that quarter percent do for this sheriff's office? If the quarter percent passes, the general fund contribution capped at the unfunded amount from taxes at $7 million this year saves the county $13 million from the general fund this year, keeps the public safety strong, preserving funds for other county needs, and avoiding future cuts or emergency fixes to fund this sheriff's office. And a quarter percent now will really avoid a much bigger price for us later. Most important thing is that we have been able to maneuver and put as many personnel as we can, many sworn deputies as we can, on the road right now. And I think that that is saying exactly what the mission of the sheriff's office is, which is public safety. And I think the sheriff has backed up all of his promises that he made during his campaign in that respect. And I'm going to leave this over to the sheriff, so he can give me, give you a closer, and then I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, President Riddell, Commissioner Moore, and Commissioner Gallagher. One of the points that I want you to draw your attention to in the public is on this current slide. The proposed sheriff's office budget for 2026 is set at $34 million. The current budget is over $31 million right now. What I want the commissioners and the public to understand is, is that this year's budget, we were actually cut from 2024 to 2025 by $750,000. In addition to that $750,000 reduction in our budget, we had to come back, if you recall, to this commission for over a quarter of a million dollars to pay for funds being requested from '24 back to '25 to pay for unencumbered expenses. No purchase orders, no encumbrances that were made on that budget to pay for the bills that were actually incurred in 2024 that we were receiving late notices on, as well as requests to pay in 2025. So that's a million. In addition to that, when we took over the office, there were spreadsheets that were created that were forwarded to the budgeting office, Casey Saunders' office underneath the commissioners. In adding up those figures on those spreadsheets that we were looking at, that was an additional 1.8 million in mathematical errors on those Excel spreadsheets for what the sheriff's office deemed was needed for their budget and what was actually reported, because the math wasn't right on the calculations for the spreadsheet. So all in all, when we look at the 1.8 million we were off, the 750,000 that our budget was actually cut by for this year, and the quarter million that we had to come back to, we're about where we are anyways in being right on target for what we're asking for. These are true numbers that we are looking at here. This is not some big jumper increase. We are not asking for a lot of that. And when we look at that too, I'm going to point to two of our majors in particular right now. Major Steve Sharshman, who's sitting in the front row, and behind him is Major Heath Tester. Major Sharshman is in charge of the Major Crimes Task Force for the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, and Major Tester is in charge of Special Operations and Intelligence. Between these two men, they have done a tremendous amount of work with the state and federal governments in basically making that entire building nearly self-sufficient out there. And the amount of grant monies that both majors and their staffs were able to garner for the operation involve our intensive investigations, high-profile investigations, drug investigations, and most importantly, the human trafficking investigations that we have going on right here in Lorraine County that a lot of people don't understand. We have more turnpike exits than any other county in Ohio, and with those come the hotels and other industries that facilitate that human trafficking trade. And these gentlemen right here are responsible for combating that. In addition to that, Major Gordon, who's sitting in the back row, has a lot to do with the jail budget and ensuring that he's working with the chief deputy and the corrections business manager for things like healthcare costs, prescription drug costs, that we were able to, as we pointed out in the first public meeting that we had, that we were able to reduce those costs by 40%. And that contract actually takes effect beginning this quarter for the budget cycle. Also, Major Karpina, who's in the row there, he's overseeing training and also the entire road patrol division. The biggest face of our office sits with Major Karpina in regards to the actual mark cars deputies who take the calls. Major Karpina has been very efficient in taking all of the personnel that used to be working Monday through Friday, eight to four in the office, putting all those personnel back on the road and the jobs that they were doing them, actually assigning them to the five admins that we had in the office to make sure that they had a full day or more, to be able to fulfill work in there as well. And then last but not least is Major A.J. Torres, who as far as what the reception that we have received by Lorraine County public right now is fully the responsibility of his office, the social media presence that we had and everything, including the Juneteenth presentation that we were able to provide in downtown Elyria as we were welcomed by the community to be able to be there. None of this happened before. We came into office, and a lot of that is Major Torres' responsibility, all reporting to the chief deputy who makes sure that they do their job on a regular basis. One of the main things that we're looking at, we keep talking about this prisoner transport unit. In regards to the prisoner transport unit, we want to make sure that we don't have commissioned armed deputies that are sitting on people in the hospital, that are transporting them to their doctor's appointments, their dentist appointments, their dialysis appointments. Every time we have a medical issue that somebody has to be transported out of the jail to a care facility, that has to be a deputy that is taken off the road, taken out of Major Karpina's rotation, and have to be used to do that. That's one less deputy that's out there to protect the citizens of Lorraine County. In addition to that, we're working with the common police courts, as I had testified to at the first public hearing, in regards to lowering the cost and making sure that we have an efficient movement of inmates from the state prisons. We have three on State Route 83 here in the county. Anytime a crime is committed within that state correctional institution, that comes here to Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas and is decided there. We're transporting prisoners right from 83 to Murray Ridge Road to other prisons within the state of Ohio. That all takes deputies. That all takes, that transport time takes away from the road and the protections of our citizens to do that. Gentlemen, we spent $1.1 million of the county's money last year in transporting prisoners or keeping prisoners within the Lorraine County jail in order to effectuate what we are required to do by order of the court. That $1.1 million does not include their hospital costs. That $1.1 million does not include the overtime of deputies having to sit on these prisoners in the hospital or a medical appointment. So by putting that staff in, we look to remove three quarter of a million or $750,000 in costs from the budget to make sure that we're more effectively spending the county's money on that. And that's why that is an important part of this program as well. So as the chief stated, if we look at what our actual ask is for the 226 budget of $34 million, I think we're about a third of a million off from the total figure of what we had to come back to you for, what we were shorted in 2025, in addition to the $1.8 million miscalculation that was provided by the prior administration. So we are providing a lot more services, being a lot more effective and a lot more efficient for actually the same amount of money. So I thank you, the chief thanks you for our opportunity to present this to you and the public today, and we are open for any questions regarding the specificity of any of the line items in the budget or why we are asking for this quarter percent, which I want to also reiterate what the chief said before, takes the politics out of the budget. So that quarter percent goes directly to the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office. And no offense to the three commissioners, but there could become a point in time that you're not in alignment with, you know, where we're going. But maybe the public is or vice versa. And we just want to make sure that we're accountable directly to the people who vote us into this office and the budget they provide us. And this is the best way that we feel that that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make one clarification. At the $34 million versus the 35.5 I had on your other sleeve, slide, the 35.5 includes the transport team, and this 34 does not. But we want to make certain that we're, I'm giving you all of the facts. That's why those two are a different number. Any questions for me?
The major issue is that by adding, we're, we're not really cutting by adding the transport team, but what we're doing is keeping people in the right alignment to give much greater service by not taking deputies off of the road to handle transport.
Well, it's that, Commissioner, and it is also the medical bills associated with prisoners, which can be a very cumbersome number over the course of the time that they're with us. Because if they're life prisoners, a lot of times they have issues that need to be then attended to. And the cost of overtime to have a deputy sit on them if we are short on the road, and to make certain that we're paying those medical bills or dental bills, et cetera.
Just so everybody's aware, what we're really talking about is a dedicated revenue stream. That does not mean that this board is going to be giving up its power in order to review how that spending moves forward. It's pretty much on how the, the current quarter percent for the jail is being handled. Your request today is pretty much, when we say, take politics out of it, we can debate that all day. But the fact of the matter is, you're still operating about seven, eight million dollars short. So the general fund, you know, you'll be giving us enough relief as we move forward for the next stage that we have to deal with. But I like the concept that it's going to be up to the public to decide on how we move forward as a county. And that's, I hope the public sees today what you guys just presented, that you're on top of it, you know?
Commissioner Moore, I wanted to make certain, clarify that these funds would go, this money would go into a specific fund within the general fund budget that is then dedicated to us. But you will be our checks and balances at all times.
Not only us, but so will be the auditor. So it's going to be, you know, yeah, just want to make sure that was clarified, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do we have any members of the audience that would like to speak? And that, that includes any questions you may have for the sheriff and the chief deputy?
I don't have any questions for them. I already had a good conversations with them. I have more questions for you guys. So I'm, I'm very supportive of those guys. Maybe not on the other part. So, Brian Baker, 49822 Greystone Drive. Commissioners, I was here two weeks ago, and I did ask a question. And I said, were we going to talk about letting the public know of what our carryover was, what our shortfall was? And I know I get crickets answers back from you guys up there, but at least I got a nod and a smile, yeah, we were going to do that. I think that if we're going to talk about putting this on, we have to educate the people about it. You can't say for a year, last year, we didn't talk about no deficit spending. This year, now, we're saying we're coming into deficit spending. The public just went through a big review of our property values, a ton of money that they had to pay extra, and now we're going to come back and ask them more. We also did it on the $5 license plate fee with no information going to the public. I feel sorry for these guys to have to go out and put on a message out there. When the message come from here, we weren't short. I know it was because of ARPA funds and what it was. I would think a great gesture for this office would be is, if we end up ever getting any money from the Midway Mall, the 13.9 million, you put that money into the jail fund, unencumbered, so that it's there. You show the public that you're working with them to give them that money to this group right here. Then the public sees that you're committed to working with the sheriff. It doesn't all come completely out of their pocket to pay for it. I don't know that it'll ever come. I don't know that we're ever going to get our money, but I think they deserve that piece. You know that I support these guys. I support the deputies. I've told Sheriff Jack Hall that. I live in the township. That's my protection. And I will say, Jack has tried to put more people on the road, and I commend him for that. But I think when you're doing it is, help the people out here to understand why they need it. You can't say for two or three years, oh, we're doing fine, and then all of a sudden, we're going to deficit spend, and we have to have this. So it makes their job a lot harder to go sell this. And that, that's just my comments though. But I still think that if you made a commitment on that 13.9 million dollars, because we're already into that fund. We already spent 1.9 million out of the 20 million that was set away, set for the jail. So we're already down on that. So when we come back to the people, make a good gesture to these guys and give them the 13.9 million. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Anyone else from the audience?
The whole purpose of the timing of our public hearing is, we were trying to get this done before the Fourth of July break, so that we, we really have until July 15th in order to pass a resolution to allow the public to make that decision on whether or not they'd like to see how we move forward with funding the sheriff's office. So by us having these public hearings, it will now give this board with our access to, with our newsletters in order to hope, you know, to continue to educate, because we wanted to have that extra month so that everybody could be educated, everybody could get up to speed on what those needs are. And you guys have been done, been doing a great job with what the, what you've been dealt with on January when you came into office. And I know you were, you know, we talked about this all the time and how shocked we are, but, you know, the 1.8 million was the shock that we did not know, in which the budget was submitted, and there was some miscalculations. So I'm glad you simplified that message from 31 to 34, because really, that was, that was done quite well. And I think that's going to be the job that we'll continue to work on in July, August, September, and October. That's four months to allow the public to make that decision on, on your office, so.
Very good. Artie?
All I can say is that, looking at your spreadsheets here, I'm seeing efficiencies in there. I've seen more patrols on the road. Those are positive things. Safety forces are very critical to this county, especially to attract other, you know, development, whether it be business development and/or housing. I commend you for what you've done. You've had some blindsides coming into office here where you've had bills that were just popping up out of nowhere and, you know, and, and you've handled it very well. So I think you guys are doing a great job.
And really, if you think about it, usually what happens in the past is we'll have, the Mars Board will come to us, and they'll do presentations very similar to you. In fact, I was even talking to Brian last night about this. If you take a look at your property taxes, you take a look at who's getting how much money on a levy, you know, it's, it's a pretty long list. Okay? I associate this as the same thing, that you're coming in, doing your presentation, and telling the public, we need this. And it's going to be up to that department, like a Mars Board or all these other committees, to go out and talk to the public and educate them on what your needs are, and how we're going to move forward. So the, the difference is, I think everyone's bleeding on levy fees, and we don't know what the future holds. And we will know probably by August 6th on whether or not this current petition drive, in which on Tuesday, we had people here talking about it, in regards to the property tax petition, whether or not that's on the ballot, that, you know, we really can't control that. Whether or not the state of Ohio, they're going to be making their decisions by next Wednesday, again, we, we really don't have control over that. But we do have control of Lorraine County and how we move forward as a county. And really, I feel what you're doing and what we're doing is, we're asking the public to participate and tell, we're telling them and educating them to say, here's how we want to move forward, you know, will you allow us to move forward? And I think this is the fairest tax. You know, a levy, homeowners pay it. A sales tax, I love, I love the analogy, you know, 100, 100 bucks, we're asking for a quarter, you know? So I do appreciate how you guys, I know you put a lot of work in, so, like you, Chief Deputy. Yeah, so, sorry, that's all I wanted to add. Sorry.
And in closing, we wish we had more public comment that would give us an opportunity to allay some of the concerns as well as correct some of the information. And I, I think it's noteworthy as the, I'm no longer the newest member of the commission, but when I got here in 2023, we were in the throes of the ARPA. And in, in my previous career, used to planning and long, medium to long-term budgeting. At that time, we were living without this, the quarter percent. This very same quarter percent was reduced in 2020 by the This very same quarter percent was reduced in two thousand and twenty by the commissioners at that time, and you'd have to ask them why they did that, but they did. And at the end of the day, that quarter percent, we, we need to come back to it because we filled that hole for the last three years with ARPA money. And some folks may not remember it, campaigns get, they kind of get forgotten and stuff, but, you know, we talked about it as early as twenty-three, that we were going to have an ARPA hangover. That as soon as all, all that, all that happy money was gone, we were going to have to get back to reality. And that's exactly what happened. We have, we have our budget director preparing a spreadsheet showing that we had this hole, it's starting in two thousand and twenty-one, and we kept filling it with ARPA money, and now there's no more ARPA money to fill the hole. As far, I, I, I think the biggest issue that we, that we want to dedicate this quarter percent that we lost out of the general fund, and we want to dedicate it to the sheriff's office, is because we've worked hard in the last three years to see to it that public safety is not just treated like an issue here, a hundred thousand dollars there, one deputy here, whatever, that we, that we build a system that, that integrated, gives the public the safety and the confidence of knowing that their families will be safe and so forth. And that goes to nine-one-one getting fully funded now with its own revenue stream, trying to fund the sheriff's office with it, with a dedicated revenue stream, putting up the tower system so that we can, we can interact with, with all the other agencies, FEMA, Coast Guard, Secret Service, Highway Patrol, all of those are public safety. And the last piece that will come someday is, is, you know, we have to take care of the jail because I'm sure most of the people in the public want those people in jail that are there. I'm sure they don't want them out on the street. So we take public safety pretty serious. We kind of look at it as our, as our prima facie duty, and, and we try to do a lot of other things with tax revenue that are benefits to the community, but this is not a benefit, this is a necessity. And so I, I, I think that the time has come to, you know, this is not a new tax, number one, it's a reinstitution of an old tax. And number two, it's a dedicated revenue stream to people that deserve to, to have control over their programming and their agenda and their, and their work plan shouldn't have to depend on political football at the commissioner level. So we thank you for those that came out today. Again, thank you for the presentation. Chief Deputy Zach, you, you did what we asked on Tuesday. You, you put some more, more meat on the bones, and we're going to continue to do that as we go forward to the public. So with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Need a motion now?
Oh, we have to close the public hearing, excuse me.
Well, before we do so, we, I think the prosecutor would like to introduce the individual that's done all the work for us.
Certainly. I'm happy to introduce Gabe Espinoza. He's one of our assistant prosecuting attorneys, who's been with our office for, what, is it, three months?
Almost three months.
Something like that. And he was definitely key in helping to draft the resolution that was brought before this board to allow these hearings to take place. So we're grateful for his assistance and all the work that he's putting so far.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Thanks.
Thank you. Just want you to know, though, that last year, you know, the commissioners were handled by, by one prosecuting attorney, and now it takes two of you, so, you know? Not saying anything.
You guys, you're causing so much trouble.
Okay.
How many deputies are here? We have attorneys.
Teresa, can I make a motion now to close the hearing?
Yes, you may.
I move to close the hearing.
Move.
Discussion.
Commissioner Riddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye. Thank you.
Are you going to adjourn?
Well, just to let people know, July first is when we will probably review this for a vote to allow the public to decide, correct? Teresa was asking to make sure that we're, okay?
Yeah, we will have a Tuesday, yeah, we will have a Tuesday meeting the first of July, and we will not have a meeting July fourth.
There you go. Thanks for coming in.
You guys made no dollars today. Was there a mistake? No dollars.
No, I was waiting.